Hello, I'm Becky Simon with the League of Women Voters of Naperville. Much of what we will be talking about tonight is the legacy of former Naperville Mayor and League Member Peg Price. As a member of League of Women Voters in 1969, Peg became involved in the campaign to shift the city from a strong mayor form of government to a council manager form. Peg was eventually elected mayor and was the first and so far only female mayor of Naperville. She was the first mayor to give a state of the city address. League Member and former Naperville City Councilwoman Judy Broadhead has said about Peg, quote, "She was absolutely fearless." You have to remember that back then, there were not that many women in government. She was also really good at getting people to agree on things. Peg always had everyone's respect. In her day, that was a really fine line to walk between being considered too aggressive and not aggressive enough. She just did it. So, with the tip of my hat to the late Peg Price, I will pass this off to our moderator, Kelly Mahoney. Kelly?
Thank you, Becky. Welcome, everyone. So tonight's focus is all about the Naperville City Council. And we have a great opportunity over the next hour to learn directly from the experts. So I'd like to start by introducing our experts. We have Doug Krieger, who is here tonight, thank you, and spotlighted, so you can tell which one is Doug. But he's our city manager and you have been, according to LinkedIn, for the past 13 years. So in your role, you are the chief administrator for all city operations and responsible for executing those policies that are established by the city council. Welcome, Doug, and thank you for attending tonight's event. We look forward to learning more from you.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you for having me.
Absolutely. I'd also like to welcome back Ms. Teresa Sullivan. So we are delighted you could join us again tonight, but in a slightly different capacity. You are a councilwoman for the city and you have been for over two years. I just noted from your bio that you serve as a liaison to the Special Events and Cultural Amenities Commission. And you also are the liaison to the community group Naperville Pride, which is an organization that celebrates the LGBTQ+ members of our community. So thank you. We're so excited to learn from you too this evening.
Thank you. I'm so glad to be here.
Awesome. So how we'll do this is typically what we do, just to kind of keep the conversation flowing in a virtual environment like this is we have some pre-prepared questions, some of which came from us and extended members of the league. But we also invite all of you tonight that are on the line to feel free to add questions in the chat because I will be monitoring those along with some helpers. And it's not a shy group. So typically, we do get a lot of questions in the chat and I'm happy to add them in to this discussion that we're having with you both. But the idea is that we want to learn. We're very intrigued about the city council and what it is all about, how it works. So let's dive in if you guys are good with that. So Doug, first question goes to you. As the city manager, could you help us understand your role? We understand your role is a role that is, you're not elected, but rather this is a role that you're appointed to or you had to interview, just like everyone else that wants to get a job. You have this role as a city manager. Can you talk to us about your role and what do you do for the city?
Absolutely. And thanks, Kelly. And first, I just wanted to point out for the questions in the chat, Councilwoman Sullivan asked that any of the difficult ones be directed to her as opposed to myself. And since she is one of my nine bosses, I would hope that you would hold to that. So what is the role of a city manager? Really, the chief administrator of the city. The mayor and city council have a total of one employee and that would be me. So while I am not elected, as long as five of them think I'm doing a sufficient job, I remain in office. Once five of them do not believe I'm doing a sufficient job, I can be removed from office. I am in charge of carrying out, really carrying out the goals and direction of city council, responsible for hiring and firing all department directors and as well as actually firing all city employees. I can delegate off the hiring piece. Each, you know, kind of each year, really the main document and really main process that the city goes through to really determine what city council would like us to focus on is really the budget process. And that is a fairly lengthy process, you know, as an organization that, you know, spends over half a billion dollars every year. It needs to be lengthy because, you know, those aren't our dollars. Those are the taxpayer dollars. And we need to make sure that we spend those in the manner that the taxpayers would like. So, you know, every day as city manager is a little bit different. As you might expect, it's tied up with a lot of meetings. It's kind of a mix. You know, part of it is managing, part of it, I like to refer to myself as the chief complaint officer because we do get a lot of those. You know, we pride ourselves in the great service that we provide. And frankly, I believe that Naperville residents have come to expect an exemplary level of service and we try to live up to that each and every day. Sometimes we don't. We take that under advisement. We own where we've fallen short and we strive to improve in those areas as best we can.
A great overview. Can you just maybe more explicitly share what are some of the services that you are priding, that you say you deliver for the city?
Oh, sure. You know, probably the most important ones really relate to the area of public safety. You know, the police chief and fire chief both report directly to me. And, you know, kind of the analogy I use is when a town is starting out, the first person they hire is not a city manager. It's usually like the sheriff or a peace officer. And then as they grow, maintaining law and order, obviously, you know, high on our list and something that I think draws a lot of people to Naperville. Also, on the public safety side, is fire department. And, you know, on most days, people will not react with either of those, but on the days you need them, we want to respond quickly and effectively. You know, the fire service is one that has changed significantly over the years. You know, up until about 30 years ago, a firefighter was really a firefighter. Now, about 80% of our calls are really on the medical side. So ambulances and paramedic duties. Department of Public Works, and you know, I just kind of go as what's critical right now. You know, we have an ice storm and we have snow in the winter. Public Works is who will clear that away. We have a finance department, human resources department, IT department, a TED department that is a little unique to city governments. The TED stands for Transportation Engineering Development and Planning. So it's TED and the P is silent. They serve really all of the permitting zoning issues as they move through the system. Something that probably 80% of municipalities have is a water department. You know, obviously, water department provides water and then also treats and removes wastewater from both businesses as well as residents. And then one in which probably one in maybe 50 municipalities have is an electric department. You know, we're very proud, we're very, very fortunate to have an electric department. You know, we pride ourselves on our reliability. And then also the fact that, you know, at least currently, we're certain, we are multiple times more reliable than kind of the traditional Commonwealth Edison, but we're also cheaper than ComEd. And, you know, really, the main reason for that is we're owned by the residents. And, you know, if we do a good job, we make $0 during the year within the electric department. You know, that's not a great business plan for ComEd, but for us, it works out great and allows us to offer very competitive rates for both residents and businesses here.
That's comprehensive. And all of these departments report into you as the city manager?
You know, not quite. I have a deputy city manager, Marcy Schatz. And because that's, that reporting relationship would certainly be too much for myself to manage. And Marcy manages directly the electric department, the water department, public works department, and then also our communications division.
Great. Well, thanks for highlighting just the scope of your role and the different departments. We certainly want to dive a little bit deeper into that. I'd like to just turn it over however to Ms. Teresa Sullivan, our councilwoman, and talk a little bit about the role of a councilwoman compared to what we just heard Doug talk about with regard to the city manager role. So what is your role as a councilwoman?
Sure. Well, first of all, I'm not as funny as Doug, so don't get used to that. As entertaining. You know, it's funny, when I thought about this question, there are official things, right, in the ordinance of what city council does. And those things are things like, you know, appoint a city manager. And we adopt amend and repeal ordinances. We approve the budget that Doug talked about. Comprehensive city planning and zoning. Let's see, operating budget, the big financial stuff. And I think the things that Doug and his team run the city day to day. But when there's not an ordinance for that, or there's, or, you know, someone says, I know that the ordinance says one thing, but I want to do another thing, those are the things that generally bubble up to city council. So during our meetings, a lot of that is approving certain dollar amount things. And Doug, I think it's over, what, is it over $100,000 that we?
Yes, it is.
Yeah. And so there are some certain things that just for the taxpayer and for transparency, you know, city council will say yes to those things. And then there's the, so those are kind of like the official duties of city council. But I think on a day-to-day basis, it looks a little bit different for everybody because it is what you make it. So I think some council members probably spend, you know, you could spend 40 hours a week doing the job. Or you could, you know, or a lot of people don't, may not have 40 hours a week to spend. So you have to kind of decide what you're going to do. But we're asked to go to fundraisers and galas and we have scout troops come in. And, you know, we're talking to constituents all the time who want things to get better. So they're emailing or we're meeting with them and there's developers. So there's just a lot of stakeholders that come to us and want to get our ear and sometimes, and many times, our help. So those are the, I think, day-to-day things that we're tasked with. And then I should also say, you mentioned before, I'm a liaison to Naperville Pride. My colleagues on city council also are liaisons to things like our TV station and to our utilities board. And so all of us also kind of have some extracurriculars where we are the, we're the city council, we kind of represent city council to those groups as they're making decisions and thinking through things for the city.
And you mentioned something, and we do have a question in the chat. Where I was going to go next is I'm hearing a lot about boards and committees and you've brought up Naperville Pride. And the question that was asked is are there opportunities for citizens to serve on city boards and committees? But maybe before we go there, can we just level set on what are these city boards? And how are the extensions of city council and maybe the city manager?
Sure. She will. And so you caught me flat footed there. I probably can't name every single commission. But the most important thing for the question is, indeed, all these commissions are available for people who live in Naperville to serve on these boards. The process is that each board has a certain amount of members. You can apply when there's a vacancy on the board because they're done by term, there's term limits. And then the mayor is actually the person who chooses, who goes on each commission with the council's approval. So that's one of the, I would say, few things the mayor does in our form of government that is above and beyond what a council member generally does. But, oh, go ahead.
How, I was going to ask, how many roughly are there of these positions that are, you know, available to the community that the mayor is appointing?
You know, there's over, there's over 100 of them. You know, we've got, we've got 19 different boards and commissions. You know, I can memorize a total of three things, but I've got them written down. It'd like me to run through them. And
Might be a great, why don't we start with one example?
All right, Planning and Zoning Commission. You know, they will serve the process of reviewing variances, zoning changes, incorporations, really what lays out kind of the geographic fabric of the city. But really, you know, something for anyone's really background or interest. Financial Advisory Board, Councilwoman Sullivan mentioned the Public Utilities Advisory Board. She serves as city council liaison for the Emergency Telephone System Board and the CICA Commission as well. And I don't know if I'm missing one or not for you, councilwoman or not?
No, those are, those are my assignments.
But, you know, from, from transportation to utilities to finance, to library, to museum, which is settlement, liquor commission, pension boards, we run the gamut. We've got a total of 19 of them. Yeah, over 100, over 100 separate positions. So, you know, I would be surprised if someone wanted to give back to the community and we did not have a board or commission that would interest them.
Interesting. Volunteer, this is a volunteer position, just to spend time, you know, helping inform, I hear, the council around key issues that are relevant to that particular board. That's what I'm hearing. Is that right?
Yeah, absolutely. And they play a big role because the nine members of council have to be very broad. You know, and so you can't get that, you know, we're all deep on different things. I find the boards so helpful because what they'll come, by the time they get to city council, we'll have the recommendation of these commissions or these boards. So people have already looked over it, you know, came up with a lot of great ideas that by the time it gets to us, I know I always feel better knowing what other people have, you know, have gone over it and have thought about it before.
Right. So what is the typical, like, requirement to be or serve on this board? Kind of experience do you have to have?
You know, the only kind of locked-in requirement is you need to be a resident of Naperville. So, you know, that's, that's really, that's really about it. Now, for the kind of more competitive boards, if you do have some experience or some education in that area, it would likely help you get selected over someone else who may be looking for that board. But yeah, for firm requirements, it's simply being a citizen of Naperville.
Gotcha. And then you'd go through some sort of interview process and then obviously be selected by the mayor ultimately to be appointed to that board position. We talked, yeah, go ahead.
So selected by the mayor and then the city council does vote and approve all of the appointments.
That's great. So we talked about a few things and there is a question just for clarification. We've got boards, we've got commissions, and we've got task force. We've also heard the term liaison. So can we talk a little bit about the differences between boards, commissions, and task forces? And that's going to either one of you.
You know, a board and commission are really limited to what the city has codified or written in its municipal code. So if you go to the city's municipal code, you will see requirements that the city has placed on itself to have these 19 separate boards and commissions. With respect to task forces, they are typically more project focused, which means that, you know, they wouldn't, they wouldn't have a, they wouldn't have duties that would take them out 20 years. There would be a specific project or task in which the city is eliciting their assistance in. And they are, they are less formal. They do not need to follow Open Meetings Act. We don't need to publish all of their meeting agendas 48 hours ahead of time. You know, if a majority of a quorum of them are talking about city business, they're not violating state law. So there's a lot of, there's a lot more flexibility with respect to a task force than there are your board and commission.
Do you have an example of a current task force?
You know, Senior Task Force is one that really kind of kicked things off. They originally came to the city and really wanted to be a board or commission. After we explained the constraints that would be placed upon them, you know, four of them couldn't go to Starbucks and talk about business. If they were going to talk about something, they, they had to post the fact that they would have the meeting and it had to be open to the public. They couldn't exclude it. You know, so at the end of the day, they were actually grateful that we talked them out of a formal board or commission. You know, kind of probably more currently, you know, one that I would put in the task force category is really NEST, the Naperville Environmental Sustainability Task Force. And they've just done a tremendous job, kind of really moving the ball and moving the needle to get the city to really focus on sustainability efforts.
That's great. We didn't catch, yes, go ahead, councilwoman.
I was just going to add on the liaison part because I'm also, I am also liaison to NEST, not as a task force. But, but we are asked by, specifically by the mayor for the boards and the commissions that are, that the city, you know, manages in that way. We're asked to be, again, kind of the voice on that, in that room so that we are, we know more about what they're doing and we can also bring back the point of view of city council. So for instance, I serve on the CICA Commission as a liaison. And sometimes the question will be, do you think council would want this to go, you know, us to do it this way? Or do you think, you know, there's more of a, you know, we should put more money this, in this way because council would like it? So it's, so sometimes I speak for council, but we don't vote. So while there's a liaison, we don't vote on those boards. The members, the volunteer members vote, we save our votes, if you will, for city council. So it's not like a double, you know, a double thing. And then, and then the task force, like NEST and Naperville Pride, which is not a task force either, it's a, it's a group. They have, they can ask members on city council to be a liaison, if you will. And, you know, in those roles, it's basically, it's the way that I do it because you, it's, you know, it's really a personal thing. It's not codified as to what our role is as much. So the way that I like to do is just when they say, hey, we really want these sustainability efforts to pass or we want this ordinance to change or we want, you know, how do we do that? And then, you know, and then I'll say, well, this is the strategy that I might employ. And then I can also talk to other members about, you know, as we, as a vote is coming up and really, if I, if I feel like it, advocate for something so that, you know, they can understand it. And it's not just a line in our agenda packet. It becomes kind of alive. And I think that's what other members do as well when they're liaison.
Thank you for touching on the liaison. That's where I was going. And just a point of clarification, the liaison is there for both commissions and task forces, correct? And they have the same sort of role. Okay, got it. That's great. You had mentioned, Doug, something called the Open Meetings Act. Could you just clarify what the Open Meetings Act is and how, how it is, what its role is in city council?
Sure. You know, the Opens Meeting, Open Meetings Act is a state law and it was really put in place to kind of prevent kind of backroom dealings and really forcing discussion and deliberation about important issues into the public. You know, really, you know, kind of similar to sunshine laws, but really ensuring that, you know, when the business of the city is done, it's communicated out to the public. People know that it's going to be talked about. They have the ability to participate. And it's not, you know, just some deal that, you know, was slicked in some, you know, cigar smoke, smoky basement somewhere around a poker table.
Right. Is that similar to the Freedom of Information Act or is it different?
You know, it's different. It's a, it's a little bit, it certainly is related and both kind of really focused on transparency. While the Open Meetings Act really focuses on how we go about doing the business of the city, the Freedom of Information Act is really a tool to ensure that if anybody wants documentation associated with any issue from the city, that we have an obligation to provide it and not to filter it and said, well, gee, you know what? I will give you this email, but, you know, I don't want to give you this one. So, you know, if anybody would like documentation about any city matter, they can file a FOIA request on the city's website via our GovQA portal and we will respond within the allotted amount of days.
Wait, so that even, so it is subject to FOIA, then? Not just the federal government regulation, but it applies to our local government here?
It absolutely does, yes.
So on that note, and it's sort of related, let's just maybe shift gears and talk a bit about ethics as it relates to running the city and city council. So can, maybe starting with you, Councilwoman Sullivan, could you describe ethics rules that govern city council members?
Sure. Well, we, we follow mostly the state, which Illinois state has laws or an ordinance that talks about what a public official can do, especially around money. And our state guidelines are actually kind of simple in that, you know, a person in office, a city council member cannot take more than $100 from a person. I think they're called prohibited parties. And the idea is that they're people who want to do business with the city or who want something from the, this lawmaker. You can't take a gift or anything else worth more than $100 per year, nor could your spouse and family members. And then, and for a meal, it has to be under $75. But again, it all adds up cumulatively to this 100. So it's like really kind of like very low, you know, stakes. And if, and so for instance, if we get tickets to, say, someone wants to give us tickets to a gala to go there. A lot of people don't know this. If it's over $100, we can't accept it. Like if that's what everybody's paying to come to the gala, so for us to go, we actually have to pay our, you know, we pay our own way. So you have to reimburse any, anything you get that, that is of value over $100 a year. And so that is kind of where the law, there are other small things and I'm sure Doug will fill in the blanks. That's what I think of when I, when I'm thinking of ethics. It is, and of course, that's in there so that you can't, you know, buy somebody's vote, right? What is, the thing about politics that I think is, gets most of us upset sometimes is that you're upset sometimes is that your campaign finances. And when somebody's running for office, the rules are totally different. They, there are a lot, a big set of rules, but they keep them totally separate. So for instance, as councilwoman, I couldn't, if I was running for office right now, I couldn't do a slogan for my campaign because I'm doing city business right now. That's another ethical rule where you gotta keep them separate. However, I can take, if I'm running for office, I can take, you know, two thousands of dollars from somebody for my campaign. And then when I, and then, and then if I win, that same person can come back to, to city council, who had, is a prohibited party, if you will, and say, oh, you know, I really would like you to change this ordinance, or I would really like you to say yes to this building. We changed that in Naperville. We were the first municipality to do so in the state of Illinois, where it actually marries that, that, that campaign finance does exist and can have an effect. So what we were able to do, and I, it's, it's a baby step. I actually hope that it will, we could go further. But what we could get done, and I'm proud that we got something done, was that if somebody, if we're voting on something that a person has an interest in, and that person or business gave a city council member more than seven hundred fifty dollars for their campaign or during the last campaign cycle, then the city council member must verbally say that before their vote. So they have to disclose that, you know, this person did give my campaign a thousand dollars and now I can vote. And I should go back one step and say, city council members are able to recuse if they think that there's a conflict of interest. The potential pitfall of that is that the real state that the council member gets to decide whether there's a conflict of interest. So the reason we did this ethics rule, this new ordinance, and why it's different, is that it, it really compels a person and gives that council person an exact, I'm out of my, an exact scenario in which, you know, they might think about recusing. And, you know, and, and that would be actually my fault, is that more people would just say, I'm, I'm gonna recuse myself because I'm, I have a conflict. But they don't need to. At least the public now can make their own, you know, decision about, you know, that there's the transparency about a vote and about money that exchanged hands in the campaign.
Well, how are we holding our elected officials accountable in those instances? It's great that we have some policies in place, but how do we hold you all accountable?
Yeah, well, everything that we get during, when people run for office, that is all public information as well. That goes to the Illinois State Board of Elections. So it's not like it, it shouldn't, it, it's probably a surprise for most people who gives who what money three years ago when they were running, right? But it is not, it is public information. So the way that we hold people accountable is that we, you know, you would know if they took that money from a, an interested party. So, you know, another council member or a member of the public could always say, hey, I, you know, you, you took this money and you probably should have either recused or, or said this verbally. We don't have, there's no criminal or civil penalties. And I think there are a lot of nervous, nervous elected people around this middle, this, as small as it seems, I think to the average person, this, this little thing that we cut out, it was still very threatening for a lot of.
Threatening in what way? From the council person's perspective, threatening that they might be held accountable and that could lead to legal issues?
Yes, exactly. So, so, so us passing, and that's why I mean, we, we wouldn't have been able to pass it at all if there were a component of, okay, you could get kicked off city council if you broke this rule. Because, you know, people said, and, and, you know, what if I forget? What if I, what if I make a mistake and it's a, and it's a, you know, it's an honest mistake? And then I look like I'm a bad person. You know, but I think that, again, if you, if you look at the amounts we're talking about and the exact scenarios, I find it, I think that it is, it is something that is manageable for anybody who was, who serves on city council to figure out whether they are or aren't. Yeah, exactly.
Gotcha. Yeah, it's an intense thing. Doug, did you want to add anything to the question? Original question being, just describe the ethics that govern city council.
You know, just, just kind of one observation, as, as in the introduction, you know, Becky talked about Mayor Price's work in moving the city to a council manager form of government back in nineteen sixty-nine. And at least on a nationwide level, a, a big push toward the council manager form of government was really driven around ethics. You know, back then, you know, you would have Mayor Jones and you might see that, well, gee, the police chief is Police Chief Jones and the fire chief is Fire Chief Jones and the dog collectors or dog catcher's last name is Jones also, really kind of separating the elected official from the hiring, decision-making process, which, you know, obviously eliminates a lot of potential ethical issues with respect to kind of who's working for the municipality.
So this idea of a mayor manager form of government is the structure that we operate under here in the city of Naperville. The alternative, just to be clear, is just a mayor or, or the chief, like you said earlier, of a smaller city, just sort of running the show and making all of the decisions.
Yeah, the, correct. And, you know, we have some local examples of that. The one I love to use that has that has a strong, strong mayor form of government is Cicero. And I was thinking like, I'm like, hey, do you want to be like Cicero? I didn't think so. So, you know, well, let's be happy with our council manager form. You know, a, a little closer, the city of Aurora has a strong mayor form of government, as well as the city of Chicago. But for communities of our size, the council manager form of government is the most prevalent.
And just so we are clear on the difference, and I have a question here in the chat that I'll get to as, as well, but the, the mayor, we haven't talked a lot about the mayor and, and hi- and his role in this. But can you talk about the mayor, as you described the city of Cicero and Aurora, and the difference between the mayor's role here in the city of Naperville?
Sure, you know, the, the mayor's role in a council manager form of government is, in, in, in our municipal code listed, it's really, hey, all of the duties of councilman. Plus, we're gonna give you four other duties. One is, you're the chief parliamentarian of a city council meeting, so you, you preside over the meetings. Two, you're the, you're the liquor commissioner. Three, you declare emergencies. And, and actually, that, that portion was one that historically had rarely been used. However, most recently, you know, with the, with the COVID pandemic, there have been a lot of emergency powers that the mayor has enacted. And then kind of the fourth additional duty is selecting members for city boards and commissions. If you contrast that with the strong mayor form of government, the strong mayor form includes kind of the mayoral duties that you would have in Naperville. Plus, kind of the administrative duties of a city manager. So, you know, the hiring and firing and management of all of the departments. So that's, those are kind of the, the, the big differences between the two.
Now, do, this is from the chat. Do other cities in the area also have a city manager?
Yes, prob- it, it, more, most of the cities will have a city manager or a village administrator if they happen to be a, a, a village. Very few, you know, outside of, for Chicagoland, it, it really is city of Chicago, city of Aurora, Cicero, and then also still popular in some of the southern communities.
Now, is there a term limit on your role as city manager? You've been it for thirteen years.
There, there, there actually is. And that term limit, their term, that term limit is up when five of my bosses say we want to fire Creed. No, there, there is no, there is no set term limit for my position.
Now, as a councilwoman, however, there are term limits, correct? Do you want to just say a few things about the process to, you know, from election to your entire term? Through to your entire term, please? Time, timing, yeah. How long do you serve?
Okay, sorry, four years is the, is the, is the term. And we can do three terms consecutively. Up to three terms consecutively. And then we, and then, so it's twelve years total that you could, that you could serve. Yeah. And you know, one, one other thing, if I could just go back on the mayor thing, but I think is kind of interesting, it might be interesting to this group, is the cities that have a strong mayor, because the mayor is also, like, that's the, it's the full-time job of that person to be mayor because they're, you know, they get paid what a, a professional, you know, might, might get paid in, in the world. When we are talking about our form of government, our mayor is only paid compensated twenty thousand dollars for the role of mayor a year. And then an extra, I think, five thousand to be liquor commissioner. But when you think about that, twenty-five thousand dollars a year, it limits who would ever, who could run for mayor or who would want to be mayor and who could serve. So I always thought it was a really interesting ethical thing because our mayor right now, Steve Cherico, I think spends, seems like he spends a lot of time, almost like a full-time, he's, you know, doing this job, but he certainly isn't getting paid for a full-time job. Whereas in a, in other forms of government, you think of the mayor, like, they're in charge, they're doing all this stuff. They've got the staff and they're getting, it is their livelihood. So that's a, I think, a difference worth pointing out. I think most people are really surprised how little compensation, you know, for
I actually did see that in the research for this and I thought it was an error. What could that possibly be, to be honest with you? So to that point, I mean, is that typical or is that specific to, to Naperville?
You know, each community that does not have strong mayor compensates a, a little bit different, but certainly both the mayor and council members in a council manager form of government, they're nowhere close to, you know, a full-time salary. You know, to a large extent, it's really, you know, meant to kind of compensate them for, you know, some of their time and some of their costs associated with holding the title.
It is intriguing and I would have lots of questions to ask our mayor about the motivation behind it. But we'll save that for another discussion. You had mentioned COVID and some of the, I would love to just talk about, it's a very relevant topic for all of us and the ways in which we've had to adjust our lives, both personally and professionally. But imagine as councilwoman, as city manager, this has been a lot for you to have to adjust to. And could you just share, and I'll ask maybe Councilwoman Sullivan, would you like to start? How have you had to adjust the ways in which you have worked over the last couple of years due to COVID?
Oh, gosh. You know, I have to say that my life as a councilwoman, you know, day to day, was not impacted nearly as much as what our staff had to do to keep Naperville running and to keep the services going. So I don't, I almost don't want to even spend time on what, whatever little thing happened to me day to day is nothing compared to the, the mountains that got moved by our city staff. So I think Doug needs to take all the credit for, for, because COVID was a huge, huge disruption to everything our city does. So Doug, I think this is probably a, a better question for you.
Right. And, and I'm usually the blame guy. I'm not the credit guy. But if, if there's credit out there, you know, I, I would put it to our team. You know, as a, as a service organization, our employees are our most valuable resource. And to put the pandemic and the risk associated with that on our organization and still have to do what we do was very challenging. You know, there are a number of jobs where we could say, hey, you know what? Here's your laptop, go home, you can do your job. But you know, you, you can't arrest bad guys, you can't put out fires. You can't take somebody in an ambulance to the hospital with a laptop at home. And so, you know, we, we certainly felt the brunt of it. We absolutely realized the importance of it. We are super, super serious about COVID mitigate, mitigation strategies, you know, elevated cleaning, rotating of shifts. You know, but kind of hybrid, you know, working in the office or working from home, if, if, if you can do both. Ensuring that, you know, frankly, that people on work minimize the amount of time that they will contact other employees. Now, out in the field, you know, if there's a car wreck and the fire department is extricating someone, you know, they need to get up close and personal. Or, you know, early in the pandemic, with some of the senior living facilities, you know, our, our crews would respond knowing that the person had COVID and was either, you know, either dead or near death. But, you know, we still had a job to do and they, they just did a fabulous job, really roasted the occasion. You know, we, it, it was something that certainly based on the last month that we really could, really never let our guard down. We could adjust a little bit and adjust kind of our staffing and how we do things. But, you know, we, we certainly had to take it very seriously and protect our employees as best we could.
Amazing. I think I can speak for our entire league here. I, I personally didn't feel any of the, any, any change in levels of service as a result of, of COVID. So thank you. And from a council woman's perspective and a council person's perspective, just in, in taking pulse on the community and some of the needs of the community, how did you have to adjust how you interacted with the public?
Oh, yeah. Well, it, I think in the beginning, most people were, they learned to use Zoom, you know, and it was okay to do these video conferences. And actually, I think some good came out of that. I think a lot of people realized, oh, I can, I can get work done via Zoom and we don't have to meet at, at city hall to do that, you know, we can hit. So I think in some ways that became easier. But I think in a lot of ways, the way that Naperville and the country is so polarized on the political aspects of COVID that, and everything that's gone on since then, it's been very difficult, I think, to to be respectful of where people are getting their information from and how they're feeling about things. And we don't have a health department, so it, it shouldn't be our jam. You know, we don't have doctors and researchers and epidemiologists consulting us. So we're saying, we've taken the, you know, Doug, Doug and his team, and we've kind of taken the approach of listening to the county and listening to the state and listening to the federal government about what we should, what we should be doing. But as you may know, a couple of years back, our Park District Board, you know, decided to sue the mayor about, or sue the governor about, you know, about COVID mitigations. And so that's been hard to to keep where it should stay. And in, in my opinion, and I think the, the majority of the council kind of is, we feel like, let, that's not our lane to make laws about public health in COVID. So I think that's been really tough because people want you to, you know, if they don't like what the state is saying or the federal government, they want you to say, we're different, we'll do it our way. And then there's, then there's, you know, another group of people that says, we, you know, you don't know anything and we don't. We have no doctors on city council. You know, so for us to just say, you know, forget masks, who cares about that? We don't like that idea. That, you know, that becomes really, again, another ethical and so that's, that's been the tough part. We get beaten up a lot.
Yeah. And that's just to be specific, related to whether or not the city is gonna take a stand around how we will handle things like to mask, to not mask, to vax, to not vax, those kinds of things.
Absolutely.
So that's been a really hot topic and it's been bubbling up to the council. So that's been a really hot topic, and it's been bubbling up to the council as a complaint, as a form of complaint, for lack of having a stance.
Yeah, and I, and I think, uh, and, and because, you know, councilmembers are elected, if the noise gets loud enough from one, you know, group, there is a temptation to put things, like, for instance, we did talk about a mask mandate. The mayor decided to put that on our agenda. And, um, you know, eh, I, I felt, and then some other people, they, it didn't belong there. I, I didn't think it ever had to go on the agenda. There was no reason we should do it, except for political theater. And so, and that's kind of what happened. So in my opinion, that's, that's how I saw it. So, yeah, it's, it's that kind of thing where if, you know, I'd love to stay in our lane and just do what we were supposed to do, stick to what we're supposed to think about and not make it a political, um, you know, spectacle. It's different if we have a health department, or if we, you know, that, that's a different, if that's our job. But in Naperville, it is not. So I'd like to stay away from us trying to weigh in on our thoughts on that for the
And, and we can, we can say that, at this point, that is the position of city council, is that we aren't making any mandates or weighing in on that space.
Right now, yes.
Great. So hopefully that addressed the question in the chat. Um, okay, I'm gonna shift gears in just a few minutes. We probably have like two minutes, but I wanted to squeeze this in. It's such an important topic and somewhat related even. Um, and I'll start with you, Councilwoman Sullivan. As a councilwoman, I'm sure that you, um, are just aware of DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and the myriad of concerns that our public has and, and around, you know, all matters. Um, how and can you share just some of the ways in which the council is taking, uh, steps to be a more inclusive community? And if, if, do we have a vision? Now, we know, and we've talked a lot about our new DEI manager, so we're aware of that. To what extent also can, maybe you talk about what we can expect from, uh, Janice Williams, our DEI manager? So I'll start with you, uh, Councilwoman Sullivan, but love to also hear from you, Doug.
Sure, and I'll, I'll let Doug speak directly to, to Dr. Williams', um, role and what she's, what she's been doing as, you know, as he's um, her, eh, you know, she's a direct reporter of that. But I think when I look at what the, what we have for the vision for the city, is that, you know, diversity is a force, it's just inherent in everything. There's a, there's, you know, everybody's different, and we're, there's nothing we can um, in, in my opinion, it's not that you can do things about diversity, but it's, it's when you, what you do with diversity and how, and the, the, how you, the spirit of how you behave in, um, a- and, and how you govern and how you set rules and boundaries. So, um, I think uh, we are certainly doing a lot on, on different fronts. Um, for instance, the, um, Human Rights Commission has a, as a, eh, eh, um, what would you call it, like, a it's like a scorecard type thing, um, and it's, and it's about how we're doing in terms of being inclusive and things like that. So anyway, those are things that our staff works on to figure out how, to constantly ask ourselves the question. Are we being equitable and fair to the people who live here? And are they being heard? Like, eh, are, are these voices being heard or are they being silenced? You know, and, and I think where we're trying to go with Naperville is to be the type of city that is very welcome, very used to, we have a lot of diversity. We're very used to it. We love it, we love it, and we're, we're respectful of each other's differences. Eh, so I, I think that that's where, when we're thinking about DEI into the future, we want Naperville to be known for that, instead of, you know, we, we got kind of a bad bum rap, um, the last couple of years, and I don't think that's who Naperville is. And, and so we want to just have it at the forefront and be thoughtful and mindful about, about it.
Thank you. Doug?
Yeah, you know, if, if, if you go back twenty, twenty-five years, um, you know, Naperville, frankly, at least from a racial standpoint, was not a very diverse community. Um, and, and, you know, since two thousand, um, that, you know, we, we've kind of flipped that up, up on its end. Um, you know, in, in the city council, as well as the city, take diversity very important. Um, you know, Dr. Williams, well, you know, where's her office? You know, it's right next to mine. So, um, I love having her on staff, um, because just as simply, uh, uh, as a resource, and also kind of a reminder um, with respect to fairness. Now, you know, we will get, uh, in, in, in occasional claim and um, or a complaint, and, you know, it used to be, well, you know, maybe I'll send them to legal or send them to the department. Um, but she's just, uh, a, a, a great sounding board, um, who, who just kind of gets it. Uh, and can really see through a lot of the chaff to get to like the heart of the issue. Um, and, you know, she's just been a fabulous addition for the city.
That's great to hear. We're hopeful, actually, get Dr. Williams to attend a league event and talk about some of the ideas that she has around the city. Um, well, great to hear that, and I'm just being really respectful of your time. Uh, appreciate so much that you would spend, both of you would spend an hour here educating all of us here at the league about the city councils. It was eye-opening, um, something that is so important to the daily operations of our lives and the services that we expect to just be there. We take probably for granted. So I appreciate you just helping us understand what you all do every single day, some of the challenges that you faced over the last two years. Thank you so much for your service and appreciate, uh, your time tonight. Thank you, Councilwoman Sullivan and Doug Crager. Appreciate your time, and, uh, I have just a few announcements for the league. If you guys want to, um, exit, you may do that. So we
Can I just say really, real quickly, thank you, and to everybody who is on this call right now, thank you for, for caring about this stuff and for being curious and for educating yourselves. They were great questions. Um, it was an honor to be asked. So I, I just, I'm so grateful for the League of Women Voters, and I'm, you know, will al- will always be for everything you do. So thank you so much for your role in our community.
Yeah, I, I echo Councilwoman Sullivan's, uh, comments. Um, you know, it's something that uh, I've done for a living for, for basically the last twenty years. It is great to see that others think that it's important and take an interest in it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, well, please join us for our next event, which is gonna be Wednesday, February ninth, for a conversation with Alyssa Kaplan on Reform for Illinois, which is about campaign financing in Illinois. So we heard a little bit about that even tonight. So how can you follow the money to see who's paying for your local political campaigns? And then also, and I have this little prop, on January thirteenth, we have a fundraiser, all about twenty percent of all the sales proceeds, um, from Little Pops Pizza on that day, which is January thirteenth, will be donated to the League of Women Voters Naperville chapter. So any order between eleven AM and nine PM will count, so just be sure to go in and mention women voters. So if you call to place your order, uh, mention that. If you do it online, just type it in the notes. So that's Little Pops Pizza on January thirteenth, um, Every Dollar Matters, uh, Fight for Our Causes. So thank you. With that, I'll say thank you to the league and to all the participants tonight. Appreciate your time and your energy and your thoughtful, thoughtful questions. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Bye.